to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. Boards, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All right. Next thing is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'll lead the invocation, followed by Mr. Pugh, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. He would value his. "Our Father and our God, Lord, we just thank you that we can come before you. Father, I just pray for all of our citizens. Lord, I pray that you will give this board wisdom as we deliberate the county's business, Father, and I pray that you help lead us to the right decisions. Father, we lift up our employees to you no matter what job they're doing for the county. They're all equally important, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen." "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, we'll be moving on to our citizen comment period of our agenda. We have one person signed up, Mr. C.H. Mead. Would you like to come forward and state your district of residency? And you'll have three minutes.
I'm here for one reason. I'm representing people on fixed income. The taxes we pay now when we go out, to me, are almost ridiculous. The people that run these businesses do not need any more taxes that they have to levy on and add to the cost of the meals that you're getting. Food's already going up enough without adding tax to it. There's so many, especially in Madison Heights area, so many businesses have gone under, maybe not from taxes, but just strictly from not having enough business in this county. People go into Lynchburg instead of here. So anyway, I feel like, especially with the federal government, state government, I'm not sure about y'all, that every nickel we give them, they want more. Every time they find somewhere to spend it, I'm not sure about y'all, but the state government's the same way. If they get some money, if they have something left over, they find a way to spend it. So I'm tired of it and having, getting less and less money. Every time we get a raise, social security raise, which doesn't even include cost of living on food or oil, gas, so forth, that type is not even included into it. And then insurance companies, everybody else wants to put their hand in our pocket and take out what we were just given. So we usually end up with even less money than before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward, state your name and your district of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Rafael, last name Rebelo. I don't know the district. I think it's Fifth, but I live in the Buffalo Springs Turnpike area, and I would like to know the status of the broadband in that area. That's my only question.
Okay. Interestingly enough, we will be having an update on broadband later in the meeting.
Okay. Could I talk to them, or?
You can talk to them after the meeting, or you can prob, they might go out with you right now. We have some other things on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. The first item is Ordinance 2023-8, Mills Tax and Davenport Discussion. And first up will be Mr. R.T. Taylor.
Good evening, Board. My name is R.T. Taylor from Davenport. You have in front of you a presentation this evening. I don't know if it's up on the screen for this evening. Should I drive that in? I'll just do it this way. So when last we met was August 15th, we had presented the different scenarios with the schools. There were four scenarios that we had analyzed up to the $14 million level, and I think it was agreed upon that we would be proceeding with the VPSA financing at the $14 million project level. So that's what you have for your consideration this evening. As part of the follow-up to the discussion of the affordability analyses and what, how it compares when we layer in that new debt for that scenario, we had identified the cash flow needs. So with that said, I'm gonna flip to the first page here, second page, if you're following on the hard copy, page numbers in the bottom right-hand corner. So in our initial discussions several months ago, we wanted to see what the impact would be without any new real estate tax or any other new resources. So we identified that we have a certain level of unassigned fund balance above policy that we might want to utilize. And then additionally, at the last meeting, we talked about what are some other resources that might potentially be analyzed. And with the help of county staff and our discussions, we identified two potential additional resources, either through a 1% increase in the Mills Tax rate, which would produce roughly $300,000 annually to the county's budget, or 2%, which would produce double that, $600,000. So what blended approach could we use between new revenue sources as well as our one-time monies to afford, looking in the vacuum right now, for the school project? Just as a FYI, we are working with county staff to come back to you ahead of the budget discussions with a comprehensive, sustainable, strategic planning model to look at, because we know it's not just this school that needs to be financed in the coming years. There are also other county and other projects that you have for consideration, and we just want to make sure you have all the key variables and information before we embark upon the FY25 budget. So. Turning to page two, I mean, excuse me, three. Let me skip ahead to page four. Page four, again, this is your existing debt profile, and this incorporates, call it the first phase of that school project, what we did in the financing in 2022 to get that first tranche of money, roughly $13 million. So this includes all your existing debt plus that '22 series, and you can see that your debt is pretty level at about $4 million annual debt service at the moment. And then by layering on that '22 financing, we went a little bit above the current budget, and the plan was to just use fund balance to shave those peaks until we identified new resources. So again, the big drop-off there in '22 provides you future funding capacity for some of those upcoming projects that we know about. Take it one step further. Again, this is all your existing debt in here. From a financial policy perspective, you are well below your self-imposed financial policy guidelines, and you're also in good stead with industry best practices for a county government of your size and budget. So you have plenty of funding capacity going forward. And we just talked through really the upshot of this page. Again, that big, large, blue-dotted box is where we want to make sure we preserve that over the next couple of years to make sure we can fold in future projects that you all may have to undertake to continue providing the level of service to the county and the citizenry. I'm gonna skip here to remind ourselves of the project scenarios that we looked at for the upcoming financing. And again, we landed on scenario four because there were some elements to the school renovation project that just didn't lend themselves well to being excluded. There were certain programs and stuff that could not go if those projects weren't done. So Phase Two is focusing on that scenario for the $14 million completion of the project. So we've updated for current market scenarios, and I know we have 30 days left to go basically before VPSA prices its bonds, but we wanted to give you a real-picture look at what the current market, how the bonds would price. So we're looking at column four, and that would fund the $14 million project. We are borrowing the first couple of years of capitalized interest so that net-net, it's awash to our current budget levels. And then, at the end of the day, under rows 10 through 18, that's where we show the level of impact to the cash flows over and above which you're currently budgeting for, for debt service for your existing debt. We'd have to find those dollars to shave those peaks over the next several years, over and above what you're currently budgeting. And the total, just looking at the total of those increases over your current budget, that's roughly $4.2 million cumulative. And so one of the concepts here is, do we use our fund balance that's above policy? Do we identify new revenue sources that could help offset some of that? And what level of those resources would we be able to use? So we've looked at the 1% Mills Tax rate, which again would produce roughly $300,000 a year, and we've also looked at a 2% Mills Tax rate increase, which would produce $600. So again, looking on line 18, if we just used fund balance, we would use roughly $4.2 million of fund balance. If we implemented the 1% Mills Tax, it would cut that in half, and you can see that on line 24. So 4.2 gets knocked down to 2.1 if we have some of those offsetting revenue sources. And then, on the next line, again, looking at the 2% option, if you look on 25, instead of having to come out of pocket for $4.2 million, when those dollars could better be invested and return, right now, the current market for your investment earnings is over 5%, you could actually get some additional dollars from those earnings to help offset some of these cash flows. But again, if you implemented the 2% sales tax increase, you would have essentially no use of fund balance. That's that little $1,600 number at the bottom there. Okay? Any questions on that discussion? Does that make sense? Okay. So I think, again, I know you have a resolution tonight regarding the VPSA school funding. I believe that comes on a little bit later in your agenda, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the cash flows or the scenarios here.
Questions right now? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We will move into our, we will open our public hearing on Ordinance 2023-8, which is the Mills Tax. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Mills Tax? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
Personally, I think, you know, I understand, we know we need some kind of income source identified for future capital. But at the same time, I think we have an opportunity here to be, to show that we're good stewards of the county finances. We have sufficient unassigned funds to, you know, take, I'd say, the 2.1 million that we're gonna have to come up with as part of the 1% Mills Tax. So we've got ample funds to take care of that now. And also, you know, set us up to have an income source moving forward for any other projects that are coming, that we know are coming. I would be opposed to going straight to a 2% increase. You know, people are hurting enough. You heard it here tonight. Everything costs more nowadays. Why are we gonna add salt to the wound right now, to the folks? So that's my two cents.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tucker.
Yeah, if I may, thank you. Being very respectful to what my colleague said, I just wanted to give another view of it. I've talked to a lot of our taxpayers here, teachers, people with kids in the schools, people with kids that will be going to the schools, people in the southern end of the county, my end of the county, who want to make sure that our emergency services stay not just as timely as they are, but get better as our population increases. We know that our population will increase with the development that we have coming into the southern end of the county. As I have said before, I look at their Mills Tax as a user tax. It's a $10 meal, it's an extra dollar. And so I want to make sure that we have got a plan in place, a structured plan, that will take care of all of these capital improvements that we have to add in this county. We know we've got to do the renovation of the school. We know that we've got fire trucks. We know that probably, more than likely, we will have to come up with a new building to hire, to place our new personnel in the southern end of the county. I want to make sure that we've got a dedicated revenue stream that's just for that. Doesn't go into the general fund. It goes just for that. And I think that our taxpayers are supportive of that. That's my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pugh?
I tend, if we're gonna do this, we've already made the decision we're gonna move forward with the school expansion. The decision has been made. As far as funding goes, I mean, there's two ways to do it. Of course, Mr. Wade, that's one way we can do it. I'd said earlier, I didn't really want to dip into the unobligated reserve, because there is gonna be something that comes up that's unforeseen, that we will not know about, that we'll have to fund out of that unobligated reserve. And I think it would be better for us to take that and keep that aside and fund it through the 2% increase in the Mills Tax, although I understand everybody's issues with that. I have my own issues with it. We can still go on in the future with our new legislators, whoever they may be, push for the 1% sales tax increase. That would be on all sales to fund the school's future infrastructure needs. We can look at that again. Right now, we don't have that available, so, but I do think we need to do that in the future. So I suppose I will support the 2% increase in the Mills Tax. The city of Lynchburg is currently above and beyond that, and many people eat in Lynchburg all the time. The town of Amherst already has this 2% increase over us, so we'll be right in line with the competitors that we have. And unfortunately, inflation is here to stay. The county does have to have more money in order to operate. Electric bills, everything that's happening to you is happening to the county as well. I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I'd like to keep the real estate taxes low. I do not want to raise those, because people spend their whole lives paying their mortgage, and then they have to, you know, then come up with the money to pay the taxes constantly. So I'd like, I'd rather see that remain low than the Mills Tax. So, well, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. Mr. Pugh, I understand your point of view. However, I think that moving forward, we know that there are needs that we're not sure how we're gonna pay for them yet. You know, we've got the opening of an additional cell at the landfill. We know that the growth in the south end of the county is coming. There's already talks about needs for new fire apparatus to deal with that down south. We know that there will possibly be more school improvements on the way, and, you know, there's always something unforeseen. We've got something unforeseen on the consent agenda later on about the fire suppression system in the courthouse. That's minor in the grand scheme of things, but there's always something. One thing, Ms. Tucker, that you said, that I've never been good at math, but the 2% on a $10 hamburger would be 20 cent, not a dollar.
You're exactly right, and I, nor have I been good at math.
But I've gotten a lot better since I've been on this board, unfortunately. So I think that we need to have a dedicated funding stream moving forward for some of these big capital needs. Increasing taxes is never popular, and it's never an easy decision to make, because it affects all of us, but it does put us on a level playing field with the town and our neighbors in Lynchburg. And one thing that was pointed out to me today, the 6% taxes collected in the town, the county does not see any of that, nor is there any county tax on Mills in the town. So, you know, we decided to move forward with the improvements to the school. I think that was absolutely the right decision. So I also would support the 2% increase to the Mills Tax. So with that, is there a motion?
Yep.
Excuse me, may I ask you to say something?
No, sir. No.
Can you turn up the volume a little bit? The speakers are not working back here.
You can say that. All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, but my computer's not working. It's not working with me. But a colleague is gonna help me out here. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the board adopt Ordinance 2023-. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the board adopt ordinance 2023-8 as presented.
Okay, with that one point, when would this be effective, Mr. Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're asking that you would make this effective January 1, and that would be part of your motion, Ms. Tucker.
I amend my motion to include the date of January 1.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes, three to one. Thank you. Moving on to special exception 2023-359 of Ronnie Wright, and that is Mr. Tyler Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. As Chairman Martin indicated, this is a special exception request by Ronnie Wright in the R2 General Residential District. The purpose of this special exception is to allow a manufactured home, also known as a single wide, on the property. The property is located at 200 Boxwood Farm Circle, as you can see before you, and is further identified as tax map ID 124-A-77. The parcel is roughly 24 acres large, with single-family dwellings located on the property. Future land use map indicates it's low-density residential with private water and sewer. However, it is in the designated growth boundary for public water. As I mentioned, there are currently two dwellings located on the property. The surrounding area in general has the same characteristics as the requested parcel, and zoned R2 all the way around the requested parcel. However, as you can see, this is kind of close towards South Amherst Highway, so these parcels closer towards up here are zoned commercial, of course, but everything else around here is zoned R2. Within the staff report, are there requirements to add up to three dwellings on a parcel in the R2 district? I'm not going to go over those unless you have specific questions. However, I did want to mention that staff did study the aerial view of the county's GIS to determine the character of the district, and observed four single wides in general area. One is currently located on the requested parcel, and there's a vested single wide, and two to the south, and one is already to the east. The remaining land use is predominantly single-family dwellings in the area. There are three recommended conditions by the Planning Commission, the item summary. And at this time, are there any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Wright present? Okay. Would you like to say anything? If you'd come forward and state your name and district, please? And you also get three minutes.
Hello, my name is Darrell Upier. Ronnie Wright is my future father-in-law. He was allowing us to put a single wide that I already own on the land. It's a well-cupped, fairly new single wide. It's a 2014 model, so it's just going to be used as a private residence. So thank you for, you know, taking the time to listen to me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? All right, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve special exception 2023-359 with the Planning Commission's recommended conditions.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh. Is there any discussion? If not, please, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Good luck with your project. Moving on to the special exception request of Shawna West. Mr. Creasy?
Chairman, Board, as Chairman Martin mentioned, this is a request by Ms. West for a special exception in the R2 district as well. The purpose of the special exception is to allow a family day home or a daycare that will serve up to 12 children. The property is located at 250 Crescent Lane and is further identified by tax ID 138B-A-9. And just so that you can get your bearings, this is South Amherst Highway here. Then, of course, we have Coolwell Road. Quickie is right down here, and then you have Crescent Lane that comes off of Coolwell. The parcel is roughly 0.43 acres large, with a single-family dwelling located on it. The future land use map splits this property with a portion of it being considered commercial and the other low-density residential. There is public water, but there is private sewer and is in the designated growth boundary for public water. As I mentioned, there is a current single-family dwelling located on the property, and the surrounding area in general, as you can see before you, has the same characteristics with single-family dwellings located on Crescent Lane, and there's a few commercial areas along South Amherst Highway, but there are also residential property that's just zoned commercial up there as well. The applicant proposes to run the family day home from Monday to Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The county's definition of what is considered a family day home can be found in the staff report, and the gist of it is it cannot serve more than 12 children at any one time. That's what makes this a special exception. There are five recommended conditions from the Planning Commission. They're listed in the item summary. I'm not going to go over them unless you have specific questions. In addition to this, staff was finally able to hear back at the beginning of the week from VDOT about the proposed entrance. That was not included in the staff report, so we didn't have it at that time, but they have indicated to me, which has already been relayed to Ms. West, who is here tonight, that they will need to meet a low-volume commercial entrance. And if approved, staff will begin that process with the applicant in VDOT. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, so it looks like it needs to be 12... 12-foot minimum, 24-foot maximum for a certain distance back. Do they have the room to do that on that flag?
Yes, sir. I believe, I've been out there to the property and putting the public hearing sign. There's a fairly large driveway, and VDOT indicated there should be no issues meeting these requirements. There's just maybe some side ditching work that may have to get done.
Okay. Board, is there any questions for Mr. Creasy? All right, if not...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do have one, but I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Creasy. Is there any other type of licensing that this business has to have in order to keep children?
I believe the applicant can answer that, but there's something through the state as well, which she must get a license for. However, she needs zoning approval in order to get that state licensing. That's why that last condition is included. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Ms. West, would you like to address the board? I'm sorry?
I didn't ask if you said it's still open, the public hearing.
It is open, yes. Ms. West?
Good evening. My name is Shawna West, and I'm currently a third-grade teacher. I have been teaching for 10 years, and throughout this time, I have seen many students with many different abilities, learning styles. The one thing that is evident in my career is that all children can learn, and with the right support, all children can be successful. This is where my family day home comes in. The biggest challenge I face as a teacher is students not having a concrete understanding of the foundational skills and the problems that they have on social, emotional level. Research has shown that every childhood education, early childhood education, pays off in the long run. By having a family day home, I will be able to provide students with the access to a licensed teacher who can provide the foundational groundwork to the academic skills they will need to be successful. I will also be able to provide them with the strategies on how to interact with others, as well as to maintain self-control in the different situations that may arise in their lives. I love children, and I love what I do, and having a family day home will allow me to do what I already do at the next level to help our children and our community. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the petitioner? So I have one question for you. So is it a day home or a school?
So my goal is to do a family day home, but I am going to apply my teaching skills to these children so that when they go to elementary school, they will have those foundational skills they're going to need. Because in the school system, the rigor is getting very heavy, and they need to have those early math skills, those early reading skills, so that once they get to elementary, they're not falling behind.
Right.
So it's going to be a family day home, but I'm going to provide my expertise in teaching with it.
And I believe the ordinance or the report spoke to up to 13 years old, but how old are the children you...
The ones that I plan on doing will probably be, I would like to start at three and go to five, so that I can give them kind of like that preschool experience.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor to the petition? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. So, Mr. Creasy? So I see that one of the conditions is that the applicant will have to meet all the Virginia statewide building code prior to the issuance of zoning permits. So the petitioner understands that?
Yes, we've talked today, actually, and she understands that if this is approved, she'll need to call our office to schedule that inspection, to have a walkthrough with the building official or an inspector, make sure it meets the minimum safety requirements.
It would be very helpful if you could also include our Director of Public Safety in that. There have been some instances in a neighboring locality with some daycare, family day homes, where some unfortunate things happened. Let's try and make sure that doesn't happen here. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Board, is there any other questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I just want to say that I applaud Ms. West for her desire and her passion and the risks that she's going to go through to open up her own business. And Lord knows our children in this county need it. Thank you.
Absolutely. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve special exception request 2023-326 with the Planning Commission's recommended conditions.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh. Any discussion? If not, I'm sorry. No, I don't think... You've got the understanding that Brad will go out with, yes. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is the special exception request of Zachary and Aubrey Salins. Did I say that correct? Salins? All right, very good. Mr. Creasy? Thinking of Mustangs, Salins, yeah, okay.
All right, so yes, Chairman, Board, this is a request by Zachary and Aubrey Salins for a special exception in our A1 Agricultural Residential District. The purpose of this special exception is to allow a short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. The property is located at 233 Athlone Lane and is further identified as tax map ID 41-3-2. You can see before you, 413-2 is currently a vacant parcel in our GIS. That's because this is a new build. I believe the contractor is here with us as well, but this was just completed and received its CO, I believe, in July of this year. So the parcel is roughly two acres large with a current, with a single-family dwelling located on it, has private sewer and water, and is not in the designated growth boundary for either. The surrounding area generally has the same characteristics as the requested parcel. You may remember, a few months ago, or maybe even closer to a year, you all approved an Airbnb right down the road here at this parcel, 196 Athlone Lane. And then to the right of it, there's a church to the west, single-family dwellings, and then vacant land back behind it. The requirements of a short-term tourist rental of a dwelling are located in the staff report, as well as the typical conditions that staff and the Planning Commission have recommended to you all in the past. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Board, okay. If we do, we'll call you back up. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would the petitioner like to address the board?
All right, thanks, everybody. Good to see you again. So apologize to those who've heard the story already. It hasn't changed much in the last month, but a little about us, we're Zach and Aubrey Salins. We live in Alexandria, Virginia currently. We're under contract for purchasing the property on Athlone. Seller is Mr. Freeman Miller. That was in the crowd today. So our intent with the property, at least for the short term, is to use it as a short-term rental, as Tyler mentioned, and a vacation property. We have kind of a unique situation. Unfortunately, we can't move out here, but our intent is long-term to move to Amherst County. But we're military. I'm recently retired, did my 22 years, so I'm free and clear, fortunately, but Aubrey is still tied down. So she is, she has an active guard position with the D.C. National Guard. So she's on the hook for another couple of years until December of 2027. So our intent, our hope, is to use the property as a short-term rental and vacation property until she retires in '27 and then move to Amherst County full-time. So that's our story.
Thank you, guys, for your time. We've fallen in love with the area. Love the house. It couldn't be more perfect. And I was fortunate enough to get the AGR position, so we can at least stay, you know, NCR, Virginia, versus moving around and bouncing around, because, well, we're tired of that. So a couple more years for me, but thank you for your time and consideration.
Very good.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and state your name and district?
Freeman Miller, from Amherst County. Live on Rosas Mill Road. I guess my cover's been blown. I am the contractor, a partner in the project. We purposely designed it to where the layout lives very well for a family, but also good for a rental. I'm very invested in the church right next door. We have no issues with the rental going in there. I live two miles down the road on the trail, and we've found the rentals in the trail to be very good neighbors in the past. So what they're trying to do in keeping the payments alive and well till she's retired, I'd personally recommend letting them do what they want to do there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, public hearing is closed. Board, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I had occasion to meet the Salins over the summer, and I can tell you without hesitation, these are the kind of people we want moving to Amherst County. They really are, and I am just tickled to death. Thank you, Freeman, for your work to make this happen, but I fully support what they're doing.
Very good. So I'll go ahead, and I move that the Board of Supervisors approve special exception 2023-364 with the Planning Commission's recommended conditions. There's a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Good luck with your project. Okay, moving on, we will move on to our consent agenda, which includes minutes, our budget calendar, appropriation for the emergency purchase of courthouse fire protections, and an appropriation of public works revenue. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I will just point out, and I know they're not scheduled yet, but I cannot make second or fourth Tuesday meetings. All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Sir, move.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, moving on to special presentation, Firefly Internet Update. Mr. Gary Wood?
All right. Well, thank you for having us. Melissa Gay, our Communications and Member Services Manager at Central Virginia Electric, and at Firefly is with me, and will have a little bit of a role here. I am sorry Mr. Martin left because the first thing I need to do is apologize to him, but I'll apologize when he comes back. I think the last time I was here, I said we were ready to move into the Winton area and start putting fiber up, and that's what I thought that night. As we started putting fiber up, we realized that there was some confusion between Appalachian Power and Firefly, and we hadn't completed our make-ready work, and we had to pull the fiber crews off and do a little additional make-ready work. So, we're a little behind the schedule we thought we were in Winton, but here's a map of where we stand today. The blue areas represent areas that are in service. That means that the fiber is built, all the splicing's done, and we either have people connected or we're finishing the connections. The main area where connections are still ongoing is up on Little and Big Piny. We've got about 100 folks, I think, still up there to connect who want service. We've got maybe half of them connected who wanted it, and we may have just a handful, maybe 10, left still in the Central Virginia Electric area that runs up Route 60 and, well, back down into Temperance. The areas to the southeast are around Gladstone and the Boxwood Road area were done previously, and we're still connecting in those areas as people sign up for service. We get a handful from time to time. The green areas have fiber under construction, and Mr. Martin, I owe you an apology because I just told the board when I started, the last time I was here, I was sure we were ready to put fiber up and have connections. We did put fiber up, and we ran into an issue that indicated to us that there'd been a miscommunication with Appalachian Power, and they had not completed their make-ready work. So, we had to get the engineers back in to design the make-ready work and portions of it, and complete portions of it. We also found that that area runs from Toy Town Road, comes down to 29, goes over through Winton, and goes up to Turkey Mountain. The last update I had last week is they have finished except for about two weeks' worth of work with the line crews, but they were awaiting some vegetation management crews. They've got some areas with some pretty heavy tree growth around the lines. They were going to put those guys in last week and this week, and then we'll have the crews come back in, finish up make-ready. We'll get our fiber crews back in October and run through that until we can get the fiber up, then do the splicing, then get connections. I owe many apologies to my friends around that area because the worst thing you can do is have false expectations out of this, and it certainly wasn't our intent. But we are, we're showing it under construction because we have it partly built. The green indicates where there's fiber construction, and this week, we released the area Pleasant View and Puppy Creek also for fiber construction. The make-ready work is completed there. So, you see, that's in green. That will take us several months. We've got about 45 miles around Winton to build. We've already built about 35 or 40% of it, but we have the rest to go. We've got about 95 miles of fiber to put in the Pleasant View and Puppy Creek area, and we have one or two little hurdles still to overcome, and I'll talk about that a little later. The other areas all have some level of make-ready work going on. So, we have make-ready crews working in the Elon area. We have make-ready engineering finishing up in the Sweet Hills area, and the make-ready engineering is already done in the rest of the county. So, it's just a question then of getting the crews and moving through. The crews that are working from Appalachian Power in Amherst County will be in Amherst County until they're done. So, we'll just work counterclockwise around there, but they're not going anywhere else. There are five make-ready crews from Davis Elliott that are working for Appalachian Power, and you should see them pretty constantly over the next year or so as they move around the county. Real quickly, let's see. So, here's the area that we already have active. We're in front of just under 1,800 homes. About 950 either are registered or connected. Again, there's probably 100 of those still waiting to be connected total, so we've got about 850 connected. The next areas with Winton and Pleasant View, we'll get in front of about another 1,000 homes. We anticipate about 600 because we're getting 50 to 60% registration in all of our new areas. And then the last remaining areas that are in make-ready now will have another 3,200 homes that we pass. The, this shows a little closer reading on the active connections. Actually, we showed 40 remaining here. I got a new report that there's a little less than that in the CVC area, and we're moving a little faster here than I remembered in the APCO part of Temperance. That's up Little and Big Piny. Then you can see that we have preregistrations are open for those next four areas, and the number of passings we'll have in each one of those. And then, let's talk a little bit about the types of challenges that do come up in these projects. Just so you'll know, we work through these as they come up. First thing is make-ready delays. Generally, it's not because we've got a miscommunication. We've only had one or two of those on a big project that's actually gone pretty well. But we will occasionally run into times where those make-ready crews will leave for storm duty. So, if we have a hurricane comes into Florida, we may lose one or more of the crews that go down and work for a couple of weeks to help put power back on. Those don't cause major hiccups, but they can slow things a little bit. We're awaiting a national forest permit that's going to affect about 18 homes in that Pleasant View area. It's fairly sparsely populated up through there. We are working through the normal process to get the permit, but it takes about six months to get those. So, we're several months in. We expect to get that and not be delayed by it, but they can, that's a big organization. That's something we have to keep constant monitoring on. We also have railroad permits, and we've got one in the Elon area that we've already started processing. Those can take up to a year to get. I'm unclear why it takes that long. It's an area that already has an electric wire across the track, and we just need to raise that wire up and put fiber, and it costs us about $20,000 and takes a year for them to approve that. But we're working through those. The other thing in Amherst County, not in the areas we're in right now, but as we come back along Route 29, crossing Route 29 is a major endeavor. Every place that we have to cross, we have to have rolling state police slowdowns on north and southbound lanes, and we have to block all entrances and exits onto the road for a two-mile stretch. It's not as bad in Amherst because with the bypass, we've got limited access, but when we get over into Madison Heights, there's a lot of driveways. We did one of these in Nelson County recently at 6:00 on a Sunday morning. We have to do them outside of normal busy hours. 6:00 on Sunday morning, we had 49 traffic control vehicles to have one at each driveway plus the slow roll. It takes us about 15 minutes to 20 minutes to get the wire across and pull back up, but it's a pretty big effort. So, we've got, I forget the number in Amherst, across four-lane roads, but that's something that we'll schedule. It can be an impediment if we run into a problem getting the labor, when you've got to get that many traffic control vehicles. Traffic control right now has some issues because it's a fairly low level of pay for those people first in it. So far, we've been able to overcome that. The other thing is getting off-duty police officers, and we may come back and ask at some point if we can get some help from the county, if the state police sometimes just don't have enough personnel that are available to help us. And then finally, when we get to the final service drops, when you call Miss Utility or 811, they have to come out and mark every time we put a shovel in the ground or every time we plow in on underground drop. When we're trying to do a number of those in a rural area, they're only staffed to a certain level, and we can overwhelm them. We try to work ahead by letting the local 811 contractors know that we're going to have more work, and hopefully, they staff up, but from time to time, they get behind. We're trying to put in about 50 service drops across our entire service area today, which is about 200 a week. This morning, we had 167 unmarked locations that had already been through the timeline when they were supposed to have been marked. Again, that's across a large area, but that can throw you off in any area where they start falling behind. So, this is just some of the things to kind of keep an eye out. We're not making excuses. We've done pretty well. We've got 23,000 people connected. We're getting 200 a week, but in any individual area, sometimes we run into things like this that can give us a hiccup. One other quick update on the totals, we've already invested about $17 million in Amherst. Total passings will be about 6,000. We'll have about 1,020 of those who are in the electric system, so it's almost 5,000 more outside of the CVC electric system. We'll end up with a $30 million total investment in Amherst County. With that, I'm going to ask Melissa to give you a little update on how citizens can keep up with progress, where we're going to be in the public area so people can find us, and I think we've got a town hall coming soon.
We do. Thank you. I'm Melissa Gay, Vice President for Communications and Member Services for Firefly Fiber Broadband. Good to see you all again. I want to urge the residents of Amherst County to register for Firefly. We get the question all the time, how can I get my Firefly? How am I going to know what's going on? We want to make sure that they are on the list, and we have a very big list. But for each of the service zones that you all saw on the map, we want to be sure while we're working in those areas that we can do that legwork while we're in the area to reduce the wait time for us having to come back and to reduce the cost. So, if the residents of Amherst County sign up, they do their preregistration before we move out of the area, that allows them the opportunity to waive the $100 installation fee. That's our incentive to have folks sign up while we're working in the area so we don't have to make our way back to them when we've gone to another county to start our work. For each step of the process, we want to stay centralized. So, I would just urge anyone who wants to know about the progress of Firefly to check our website. It is the most up-to-date information that we have. They can search on the website for their county and choose Amherst County. They can look at the maps and see their Chevron. So, we have a Chevron of progress that moves as we get the updates, moves through each step of the construction. So, if you've got a late-night person or somebody who wants to look up that information outside of Firefly hours, I encourage them, or even during Firefly hours, on the, just to take a quick minute and see how their project is coming along. So, please do sign up, and we do have a town hall coming up for Pleasant View, that area, Pleasant View, Puppy Creek, that you saw on the map that started into fiber construction. We will be sending an invitation to every resident who lives in that area. They don't have to do anything to receive that invitation. They just have to have an address that falls within that shape file, and we'll send the invitation to them at the end of November or December will be our date for that town hall. That is a virtual meeting. They'll receive a letter. They can click on a Zoom link and come on and see our presentation and type in any questions, specific questions that they have about the Firefly project. So, we'll tell our Pleasant View folks to keep an eye out for that invitation. It will come in a Firefly envelope. And then finally, we're very excited. This is Firefly's first attendance at the Amherst County Fair. So, we will have a booth there, and we'll encourage our Amherst residents to come by and see us, pick up your Firefly swag, and ask questions, check out our maps. But please do look for us on Saturday at the Amherst County Fair. We're really excited to have a table there for the very first time.
Great. Will it take any questions? Board?
I have one question. For the folks that fall into the zones that are not identified here, specifically on the southern end of Amherst County, I know they're in, you know, the Comcast zone or whatever, but there are pockets there where they're not served by Comcast. Comcast tells them it's going to cost them $15,000 to run a line. Is Firefly doing anything to capture that information and, you know, make sure they get some type of service by the end of this project, by the time everything's done? Or what is the plan there? Or is there a plan?
There is a plan, and actually, this isn't blowing up very well, but we went in and looked to try to identify every single location where Comcast didn't claim to have service. We have some just off of Route 29 in Madison Heights that really aren't far off the road, but we included every one of those. So, if we know of it, it's included. You do bring up another good point, though. If, right now, if you want to see if you're in our project, you can go online, type in your address at the fireflyva.com site, and it will tell you if you're in our service area. If you know you're not served and you aren't in our service area, there's another round of body applications going in in December, and we're going to put one in and make sure we cover, again, everybody that, there are only a handful that we know of, except in a couple of counties. But if there are any in Amherst County, we'd love to include them and make sure that we have the funding. If it takes a little more funding, if it's a mile off of our build, we'll build a mile to go to one person, as long as we can get a little support so that we can make sure it breaks even. But we have some pockets. I just looked for one gentleman who used to work for us. He's a line worker in the electric field, and he was telling me recently that Comcast told he and a neighbor it would cost $35,000 to get service. He's not far, he's in Madison Heights, and I looked, and he's in one of our pockets. So, we do have a lot of those covered, but any that aren't, we'd love to know about it so we can include them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you both. It's kind of like Christmas, you know, you really, really, really can't wait for it to get here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, Old Business Resolution 2023-16-R, the school bonds. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah. This is... Sorry. This resolution is in conjunction with what we've been doing in terms of the school bonds. This is required to be approved as part of all the work that we've done, so staff recommends that this is approved. RT Taylor's still here if you have further questions on this bond sale with the VPSA.
Board, is there any questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Bryant?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that the board approve Resolution 2023-16-R and the execution of the bond sale agreement by the county administrator.
Okay. And my understanding is this needs to be a roll-call vote. Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Martin, I vote aye. Motion passes. Very good. All right. Moving on to New Business. Forest Service Proposal, Recreation Fee Change. Ms. Lauren Stoll, you've been waiting so patiently. Thank you.
That is it. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Can you get me a slideshow view there? And then what am I just hitting the right one?
Good evening. I'll do my best to be brief. I am Lauren Stoll. I'm the District Ranger for the Glenwood and the Pedlar Ranger District. So, we manage the national forest land in about six counties, including your national forest land here in Amherst. Let me go over here. So, in addition to doing wildfire suppression, forest management, wildlife habitat improvement, we are known for being a recreation destination. we are known for being a recreation destination. Here in Amherst, we manage the South Pedlar ATV Trail System, the Mount Pleasant National Scenic Area with Coal Mountain and other spectacular pieces of the Appalachian Trail, Panther Falls, and many other destinations. We want to do our best when we're managing a really large recreation portfolio to make sure that we are focusing our efforts and our limited resources to provide really high-quality opportunities for the visiting public, both now and in the future. So we call that sustainable recreation, just making sure we have a recreation portfolio that's nice to visit and that's going to stick around. So I'm here tonight because while most of the recreation opportunities on the national forests that we provide are free, we don't have entrance fees, for example, like a national park to visit the national forest. At some of our heavily-used or more-developed areas, we do implement recreation fees. Those recreation fees do a couple of things. They help us offset costs of operation. They help us maintain these sites, conduct facility improvements. A lot of our facilities were built in the 1930s by the CCCs, and so they've reached their lifespan. We are here tonight because we have proposed a new fee of $14 a night at Orinoco Campground. I'm not doing a great job with technology here. Most all of that fee, 95% of that fee, would come back into helping us maintain that site. Again, we just want to make sure it's financially sustainable. Of note, citizens are able to obtain senior passes. Disabled citizens can get access passes, and those reduce that fee in half. So many of our users can continue to camp for $7 a night. Okay. So with this proposed fee, we are trying to address a few issues. Right now, we don't offer many services at all at Orinoco Campground. If you've been out there, there's a vault toilet and not much of anything else. We would like to consider offering potable water. We would like to delineate the sites. Right now, there's not... You can't go out and stay in Site Number One or Site Number Two. It's kind of a free-for-all. We have folks who are camping in some sensitive riparian areas right there on the Pedlar River. We'd like to address that. If we delineate the sites, we think we could provide some great privacy, create a nice family camping experience. We could provide fire rings, lantern posts, picnic tables. We also want to address some abuses that we're seeing out at Orinoco Campground. We do have some issues with regular users coming out and bringing trailers and just leaving them, kind of holding a spot. We don't see a lot of visitation. They might come out on a Saturday evening, for example, but there are quite a few complaints that come into our office because folks cannot go out to camp because they can't find a spot. I looked yesterday online and just did a quick Google search of Orinoco reviews. One visitor to the county said the campground was packed with unoccupied trailers, and another one said it looked like a travel trailer storage lot. I wish I could have had an opportunity to camp and fish. Another issue that we hope to address, we are working... Our law enforcement officer works with the sheriff's department regularly. We are having some issues with folks who are using the national forest as a permanent residence, and so we also hope to address some of those issues. We just want to provide a more welcoming and just a nicer experience out at Orinoco Campground. I've got just two photos of another primitive campground that we operate. This is North Creek Campground over in Bodatack County, very similar setup along a nice, popular trout stream. And you can just see over there, we've delineated some sites. We have same setup vault toilet over there, but just a different feel and sort of what we are proposing to go forward with. So a decision hasn't been made on this proposal. We are here tonight... I am here tonight because public comment is open on this proposal through the end of October. If you all have any comments, I'd love to hear those, and any of the citizens that would like to contact me. My contact information is in there. You can also Google the George Washington and Jefferson National Forest, and public comment on all our recreation fee proposals is the first thing that pops up right now. So thank you all for providing me time. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Board?
If you get approval to do this, when would you start construction for these improvements?
The earliest that the fee could be implemented would probably be 2025, that recreation season. We could start... We would like to start the improvements in advance of that if we are able to get approval. I don't see anything happening in the next year, though.
Okay. So with no one being on site, how will you collect the funds? Do people reserve the spots, or how does that work?
Good question. At our other campgrounds, we handle it a couple of different ways. At North Creek Campground, part of the year, we have a volunteer campground host who stays there in their trailer, and they handle fee payment at that time. When that host is not there, we have a fee tube, and people can pay on-site. We do have some of our campgrounds on a reservation system, and people can pay in advance. We're seeing a demand from a lot of people to switch to our reservation system so that when you know you're driving an hour and pulling a trailer, that you'd have a guaranteed site. So we have a mix of both right now, and we'd be open to hearing what the community would like on that.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. I've received some complaints from some people in the county about the conditions at CC Camp. That's what everybody calls it.
Correct.
CC Camp. And so I'm well aware of that. I think this would be a good... If you can make it like North Creek, that would be great and allow more people to access the facilities. So hopefully, it's something that we'll get through. I think it's a good idea, and will help establish a better precedent for the campground.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
Have a good evening. All right. Moving on to the ARPA update. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. The board received $6.1 million of ARPA funds in your packet. We included all of the things that we've appropriated funds for. The funds left in various categories without an easily identified purpose are around $92,000. We're... Staff's pointing out that one option you could use is in your approved and adopted CIP, there's a public safety fire truck that's budgeted for $93,750. So our recommendation is that the board change the ARPA spending plan to move that $92,429 towards that fire truck or that public safety truck. And what that allows us to do is then not use your unobligated general fund for that CIP balance, and this money would then go back into the general fund by using ARPA funds.
Just to be clear, it's not a public safety fire truck. It is a captain's vehicle.
I say fire truck. Public safety truck. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Because you cannot buy a fire truck for $92,000.
Great point.
Board, what is your thoughts?
Sins to me.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right. Then is there a motion that would include using that funding for the public safety vehicle?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I move that the board change the ARPA spending plan to move $92,429... $429.00 from categories with remaining balances, except for water and sewer infrastructure, broadband, and the fire truck.
Friendly amendment to be used for the purchase of the public safety.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Get that, Chris. Any discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor signify with a saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All right. We will move on to the county administrator's report. Mr. Bryant?
No. The reports in your packet, I will point out, there's a few significant things to consider. One, I recently submitted the Community Development Block Grant Project for Madison Heights, submitted that on September the 15th for a planning grant for the Old Wright Shop, Seminole, Lakeview area. Mr. Wade and I were at a community meeting in his district, so that's been off, submitted. I'll also point out that, well, you know about Serleu Christian Trail? That's on here. The Madison Heights Master Plan is going to the Planning Commission next week for their consideration. We anticipate that coming to you. Now it's backed up just one month to October instead of September. And then staff is working away on the RDA process. That's been a very time-consuming process for a lot of staff members, and they're spending a lot of time trying to get that together. So any questions for me on the report?
Board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Moving on to the county attorney's report. Mr. Popovich?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything specific, but I would like to take the opportunity to just let the board know that my... Over the past few months, working with Mr. Bryant, it's been an absolute pleasure. He clearly takes his position very seriously and is very deliberate and usually talks to me before he actually makes a decision. So I applaud him for that, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him to you.
We think he's pretty nifty, too. All right. Moving on to liaison and committee reports. Parks and Rec, Mr. Bryant mentioned the dedication of the Serleu Christian Trail. That was well-attended. I saw some of you there. Thank you for coming. Parks and Rec continues to do great things. I believe they're doing fall soccer still, and the numbers are way up. We'll be doing their fall Halloween spookery again, so great things coming from Parks and Rec. So we'll move on to the agricultural committee. Ms. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to departmental reports, general fund availability. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. I think what's important, I'll point out in your packet, is the summary sheet, but also the actual report. And we spend a lot of time looking at the fund balance. So a few things I'll point out. The 15% financial policy, the mandatory reserve that we have as of January the 30th, sits at $7.2 million. So that's the 15% that we don't touch, we set aside. You may recall that we've also set aside what's called a future fund, which is $1.7 million. That is separate of that $7.2 million. And so the other important thing to note is we have an available fund balance of $9.3 million, which is outside of the 15% reserve that we keep, right? So if you include both and add the future fund of that $1.7 million and the $9.3 available funds, we have approximately $11.1 million that's available to the board for use of future projects. We did recently, I just looked over the past couple of years, about five years ago, we had about $5.7 million in this. This number has increased some, and with some help from the ARPA funds, of us being able to use those funds to defer cost of capital improvement and other such items. So right now, you have about $25 million total as of June the 30th, 2022 audit report. And again, that's including the 15% set aside, the $1.7 future fund, and the $9.3 available funds. And if you have any real hard technical questions, I'll have to call Stacy McBride.
Any questions for Mr. Bryant to ask Ms. McBride about?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All right. We will move back to citizen comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Ms. Pryor, if you'd come forward and state your name and district.
District Three. I just really wanted to say this meeting was a really nice meeting to watch, to see y'all working together, and nobody here to watch. Y'all get a lot of groups and grapes, and I'll give my own, but I just really wanted to say thank y'all for all the hard work you do that is behind the scenes, all the time you take to learn what you're doing, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to matters from the board of supervisors. Mr. Pew?
I have nothing.
Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wade?
Nothing tonight, sir.
And I have nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor signify with a saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. We stand adjourned.